Okay, we have a thumbs up, which means we are live, and this is the meeting for our recess meeting on March the 18th. This will conclude all of our regular scheduled meetings for the month of March, and we'll move into April next time around. But in the meantime, if you would please, we'll call this meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by implication, all Mr. Strunk, and then a moment of silence. If you would, please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All Mr. Strunk, if you would, please.
Thank you. Let us pray for the upcoming elections. Almighty God, to whom we must account for all our powers and privileges, guide the people of Starkville in the election of officials and representatives, that by faithful administration and wise laws, the rights of all may be protected, and our community be enabled to fulfill your purposes through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
All right, thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here on this actually lovely day. Beautiful weather outside. Our first order of business beyond what we have already done is approval of the official agenda with consented items. And I would ask the board's indulgence, there are a couple of items on the agenda from the work session. Well, there's one item on the agenda from the work session, and then one that we added today. I sent everybody an email. Hopefully, most of you got it. This is basically an emergency for us. There's a pump for a well that has failed, and so we're asking it to be online. Automization limit, it's like $7,200, but it is $7,200. So I would ask that the board consider putting that on the consent agenda. So, okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? All right, we'll put that on the consent agenda. And then there was one other item. If you recall from the work session, Alderman Brooks wanted to take a look at the Atkinson subdivision under Community Development and Planning. And so he has done that. He communicated with me and Mr. Haviland today that he was okay with that. So without objection, any objection to putting that on the consent agenda?
Approved.
Okay. I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman, I'm sorry, from Vice Mayor Perkins. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, we can put that one on the consent agenda as well, so, all right. And with that, I need a motion to approve the official agenda with consented items. Any changes for any other items on the agenda, Alderman Mooreland?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Ruck?
No, ma'am, thank you.
And Alderman Brooks is not with us this evening. Alderman Beatty? Alderman Sistrunk?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right. I do need a motion for the official agenda with the consented items as modified.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Ruck. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Moreland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you so much. And I will now read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the February 28th, 2025 work session of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. And we have consideration of the minutes of the March 4th, 2025 meeting of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Then we go to department business. Under Airport, we have consideration of the 2025 Airport Agricultural Lease between Kyle Knight, the highest bidder, and the City of Starkville. Then under Community Development and Planning, the item we just put on consent is consideration of FP 24-11, a request for a final plat approval for Atkinson MSU subdivision located north of University Drive and east of Camp Avenue in a T5U zoning district. Then under Engineering, we have request approval for Stephen Kappelman to attend the 2025 National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACTO, Washington DC Conference in May, and authorize advanced travel expenses not to exceed $4,000. Two is consideration of rejecting construction bid for the Spring Street Connector South Improvements Project. Three is request approval for consideration to purchase a Skid steer and all accessories as specified from the lowest bidder, Stribling Equipment Company, at a cost of $148,266, and authorize the City Clerk's Office to explore financing most optimum to the city. Under, what is that, under, sorry, under Finance Administration. Two is acceptance of the February 2025 financial statements. Three is request approval to renew a revised mechanical service agreement with Brislin Inc. for City Hall for inspections and maintenance of all HVAC equipment at an annual cost of $5,100. Four is consideration to approve, consideration to approve to add vehicles ending in VIN number 4388 and VIN number 9393 to the list of City of Starkville unmarked cars for fiscal year 2025 under section 25-1-87. Under HR, we have request authorization to transition John Quavious Ivy to a full-time sanitation worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Request approval to hire Dylan Pedden as a DUI officer in the Starkville Police Department. Three is request authorization to hire Sabrina Phillips as a billing manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. Four is request authorization to hire Dominic Phillips as a part-time dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. Five is request authorization to hire Jalen Combs and Austin Posey as non-EMT reserve firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Six is request authorization to hire Chance Knoll and Graham Murfree as full-time non-certified firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Seven is request authorization to hire Marcus Hendricks as a street maintenance worker, one, in the street department. Eight is request authorization to hire Luke DeSantis as a part-time aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. Under Parks, we have consideration of approving change order number three for the McKee Park Improvements Project in the amount of $108,863.72 increased with Ethos Contracting Group. Two is consideration of approving the low bid from Byram Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,792,958 for the installation of a box culvert at JL King Park. Three is consideration of proving a professional services contract with the Artful Gardener LLC for the conceptual design work towards a cornerstone park arboretum for the hourly not to exceed amount of $25,000. Four is consideration of approving change order number one for the 2025 ADA improvements project at Moncree Park in the amount of $6,590 increased with Henon LLC and an additional three calendar days. Under Police, we have request approval to enter into a new motorcycle lease agreement with Harley-Davidson Leasing, Inc. and Redstone Harley-Davidson for three motorcycles at $395.17 each per month for 36 months. B is request authorization upon approval of the three new motorcycle lease agreements for Redstone Harley-Davidson to install per building specs police motorcycle equipment totaling $22,301.09. C is consideration of the City of Starkville and Starkville Police Department entering into an interlocal agreement to participate in the North Mississippi Human Trafficking Enforcement Task Force, a regional joint task force dedicated to combating human trafficking. D is request authorization to apply for the 100% reimbursable fiscal year 25 Mississippi Department of Homeland Security grant in the amount of $44,995 to be used in the area of police equipment. And E is request authorization to enter into 60-month lease with Enterprise Fleet Management for a DARE 2024 Dodge Durango Pursuit white four-door all-wheel-drive vehicle at a total monthly lease charge of $747.33 and additional police equipment and graphics to the cost of $14,230. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to advertise for bids for the construction of an automatic fault location isolation and service restoration, FLISR, for MSU 69 KV tap line. Two is request authorization to advertise for bids for construction of Starkville primary to MSU 69 KV transmission line relocations. Three is request authorization to advertise for bids for transmission steel structures and appurtenances material only for the transmission relocation project. Four is request authorization to accept the lower quote from Electric Motor Sales and Service in the amount of $29,375 for a well pump. Five is approval of a lower quote from Myers-Fitts Sales, LLC for a new chain link fence at the Curry Street Water Facilities in the amount of $5,500. Six is move approval to authorize Golden Triangle Planning and Development District to prepare and submit a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, application to the Mississippi Development Authority, MDA, on behalf of the City of Starkville for the purpose of sewer improvements to an area not currently being served, which includes the areas of Henderson Road and Sand Road. Seven is request authorization to approve the low quote from DOS Electric in the amount of $7,200 for a soft start for Academy Well. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to do that. Under Mayor's announcements, I'm sorry, under announcements and comments, the mayor's got some. I've got several. First of all, I neglected last time around to mention that we do have a Women's History Month proclamation as March is Women's History Month. So we did do that, and I should have announced it at the previous meeting, at the first meeting in March. We also have the announcement related to absentee voting. So I want to make sure everybody is aware that we have absentee voting for the primary election, which is coming up April the 1st, on Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that is in the City Clerk's office. And then Saturdays on March the 22nd, and then March the 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, also in the City Clerk's office. And we also need to remind folks that there's a change in the voting locations for you, or that you need to look and see that you're still in the ward you thought you were in before, because some of those ward lines have changed due to the redistricting associated with the annexation and with the census of 2020. So that all became effective that would apply to this particular election. So I'm going to let the Vice Mayor tell you where those locations are. But that is part of what we need to do, is make sure everyone's aware of that, and we do our best, if necessary, the City Clerk's Office is happy to tell you exactly where those wards are. We also have maps. We have an interactive map on the website that you would be able to pull up and look at it if you so desire. So, all right, I have also employee introductions, which is always great fun. But I think before I do that, let me do this first. So Mr. Kemp, who is on the phone, has asked me to make the announcements regarding the energy workshops again. So let me do that one more time. They are going to be Tuesday, April the 8th, at Peters Rock, which is at 223 MLK Drive West, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then Wednesday, April the 9th, from 11:30 to 12:30 p.m. at the Needmore Center, which is 610 Gillespie. And then again, from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Needmore Center, which is 610 Gillespie. And then 5:00 p.m. to 5:45 at the First Methodist Church, which is on Lampkin, which is right down the way there. And then on Thursday, April the 10th, we've got from 10:00 to 11:00 at GTPDD and the AARP Senior Group at 106 Miley Drive, you've got a workshop. And then from 11:30 to 12:30 at the Sports Plex Annex Building, 401 Lynn Lane. And then 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., also at the Sports Plex Annex Building, 401 Lynn Lane. And then 5:30 to 6:30 at the Episcopal Church, which is 105 North Montgomery. So all of those are the energy workshops, and we have those periodically, but these are the ones that are most recently scheduled. So if you'd like to take advantage of those, I think they're really good workshops, and they give you a number of things that you can do to your home. And then they also give you like a $40 value. Is that correct? Okay. A $40 value of things to help you make your home more energy efficient. So, all right, having said that, now we get to do some introductions, which is always exciting to me. I love this. So first, we have Starkville Utilities. And Mr. Kurt Ward is our, has joined our team as a lineman for Starkville Utilities. He brings with him two decades of experience working with electrical systems. He has an extensive background in operating electrical lines, conducting inspections, and installing transformer banks, all while ensuring projects are completed in full compliance with regulations. In his role, Kurt will oversee the installation of transmission lines, electric systems, transformers, and more throughout the City of Starkville. He will also provide training and mentoring for apprentice linemen on his team, including installation of traffic and streetlights, performing preventative maintenance, and demonstrating company safety rules and regulations to minimize workplace accidents. Mr. Ward is originally from West Point and is married to Courtney Ward. They have two children, Walker and Kitty. And in his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family, hunting, and continuing to expand his knowledge and skills as a lineman, which sounds like they're very extensive. So welcome to Starkville. Glad to have you. All right, and next we have the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. See Mr. Smiley back there with some folks? So if y'all will come up, first we have Jacob Lee. So Jacob, which one are you? Raise your hand, my friend. All right, thank you, Mr. Lee. He has joined our team as a seasonal sanitation worker approximately six months ago and is now transitioned to serve as a full-time sanitation worker. Jacob brings a strong work ethic and dedication to keeping our community clean and safe. In his new role, Jacob will be responsible for providing essential waste management services, including collecting trash and recycling, ensuring public spaces throughout the city remain clean and well-maintained. He will play an integral part in maintaining the beauty and cleanliness of our neighborhoods. He is a Starkville native and alumni of Starkville High School. Oh, go Jackets! All right, cool. In his free time, Jacob enjoys spending time with his friends and family, watching sports and exploring the city. We are delighted to have Jacob on our team and look forward to working with you soon. All right, next we have Ryan Smith. All right, Mr. Smith, what position did you play on the football team? Okay, he has joined our team as a foreman with prior experience working for Royal Trucking Company. He brings a wealth of knowledge and strong commitment to safety and efficiency. In this role, Ryan will be responsible for ensuring the safety and timely collection of trash and recycling throughout the city and also maintaining cleanliness in public spaces. His extensive driving experience and professionalism will help ensure the smooth operation of the department's waste management services. Ryan is originally from Cedar Bluff, Mississippi, and graduated from West Clay County High School. We are excited to have someone with his background and skill set join our team. He is married to Monica Smith. He is married to Monica Smith, and they have two children, Gabriel and Ryan. In his spare time, he enjoys riding ATVs with his family and friends, and looks forward to making a positive impact in the community, and we welcome you to Starkville. And last but not least, we have Mr. Edron Taylor. Mr. Taylor has joined our team as a seasonal sanitation worker approximately four months ago, and since transitioned to a full-time sanitation worker. In his role, Edron will provide essential waste management services to ensure that our community remains clean by collecting trash and recycling to maintain cleanliness in public spaces. He will play a crucial role in keeping our neighborhoods looking great. He is originally from Macon, Mississippi, having previously worked at Starkville Cafe. Oh, nice, okay. He has developed a deep passion for serving the city and enjoys collaborating with the people he works alongside. In his spare time, Edron enjoys spending time with his friends, family, and relaxing, and he's excited to serve the community and make a positive impact, so we welcome you. Thank you, Mr. Smiley. All right, and that concludes the employee introductions. Do we have any comments from the board? Alderman Morning?
Yes, ma'am, just reminding people to go vote for the best small town in USA today.
Oh, yes.
We dropped to number two, and I don't like losing, so.
And it's on the website, so Mr. Joel has put it on the website for us, so there's a QR code there, so vote once a day. However many devices you have, if you have a computer or you have a phone, you can vote twice, one on one device and one on the other, and it's just a number, so that's absolutely perfect. Thank you so much.
And there are going to be QR codes popping up around town after Friday, the partnership's taking those, and then I wanted to remind everybody about SFC and the Park Plan that's coming up next week.
Survey, yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
All right, Alderman Bay. Alderman Sistrunk?
Let's just tag on, give a little more information about the SFC and Parks Master Plan, the community. The community input session will be at McKee? At the Annex.
At the Annex.
At the Sportsplex Annex, the 25th at 6 o'clock.
Six, yes.
25th, 6 o'clock, Sportsplex Annex.
Yes, and let me also say that, you know, this is a master plan that we had done in 2016, this is a re-swizzle of it, or we need to update it, and so this is an opportunity for us to find out what the community's thinking, what we're looking forward to, what we want, what we need, and we implemented the master plan from 2016, 2017, and so we fully expect this to be a working document, so we'll look forward to as much participation as possible. So, all right, thank you, Ms. Sistrunk. Vice Mayor Parkins?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I just want to take this privilege and moment and opportunity to thank you for your important public service announcement about the upcoming election, which will be held two weeks from today, on Tuesday, April 1, 2025, and further appreciate your comments at the work session about absentee voting, and our staff is doing a very remarkable job with absentee voting, and as you well said, Mayor, the absentee voting will continue through the last Saturday in this month. It will be, Ms. Harden has done a great job with her team, from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, will be open on this coming Saturday from 8:00 to noon, and then the last Saturday in this month. Mayor, we'd like to add on, as you mentioned, the polling places are very, very important. Hopefully, everyone who is tuned in this evening and who is listening and are watching this live meeting of this Honorable Mayor and Board of Aldermen, that the polling places are very, very critical and important, the polling places for this 2025 municipal election is not completely the same as they were in 2021, so I will articulate very carefully and comprehensively the polling places for the upcoming municipal election. So those qualified voters in Ward 1 will vote at the Sportsplex in the Annex Building. Ward 2 voters will vote at the Sportsplex in the Travis Outlaw Building. Ward 3 will vote at the Sportsplex in the Travis Outlaw Building. Ward 4 registered voters will vote here in City Hall. Ward 5 registered voters will vote at the Fire Station Number 1. Ward 6 registered voters will vote at Fire Station Number 3, and Ward 7 will vote here in City Hall. So that is the lineup as to your polling places, and we hope that we'll have a record turnout, very important positions on the ballot, and the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So please get out and exercise your right to vote, and thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and also, we're going to post on the prior polling places so that no one's confused, we're going to post where the new polling place is, that it is no longer at Montpelier, for example, that it will be up at Fire Station 3, so we'll put those on the doors of the places that used to be where they voted, so.
Mayor, let me add on to that, you've done a great job in mentioning that, since you mentioned Montpelier, that's where it was in 2021 for Ward 6, so let's kind of tag on to that, and Ward 4 last voted at the Needmore Center, so they'll be here, and then Ward 7 voted at the Octavia Hall Cannon Circuit Court Building, so, and this year, the Board, well, prior to this year, it went into effect on January 1, 2023, when all the new polling places were in effect, but just wanted to add on to that, because not only Ward 6 has the new polling place, but, and of course, Ward 1 has been in effect because of the special election we had earlier, and then Ward 4 and Ward 7 had other polling places, but they both, Ward 4 and 7 would be voting in our City Hall, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next we go to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to give us concerns, complaints, compliments, we take them all. You have three minutes, as is provided by the City Clerk, who will be timing the speakers.
I would agree to Mayor Bullman's name, the Adam Tunnell Ward 7. I would to Mayor, Police Chief, Fire Chief, the sanitation. Citizens have a few concerns that they want me to bring to attention. A radical from Ridge the Bank in the hood on Main Street, we need to do a little painting to let people know where the sun line is and where the other line is, because with the construction, they cannot tell how far to get over for each other, so you could put a little painting there so that they'll know where the sun line is and where the other line is, and they won't be scraping each other. Also, Main Street, Javon Street, Lobe Street, we need a four-way stop there, because we have someone on the way, Rick Ezzy, playing across the street tonight, but their car parked right where the sign is, it's a blind spot. Anyone coming off Main Street, coming from Javon Street, might can't see each other, and we definitely don't want to wind up in the electric problem by trying to dodge stuff. Also, we have a situation on Luba Street, Scale Street, and all the, we see that the traffic light is down, but then we have four-way stops, and sometimes people that used to be, realize, run through the stop sign, but that just is for showing that we would like for you to.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, anyone else? Mr. Drappel?
Good evening to the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen, I am Patty Drappela, a resident of Ward 4. I stand before effective government for the City of Starkville, and I'm here to preach to your listeners about the importance of voting April 1st. I second the sentiments of the Vice Mayor and Alderman Sistrunk about the upcoming election, and people, I want to tell you, it's important that you get out and vote. Now, I'm a believer in democracy, I'm a believer in good government. The City of Starkville is lucky that we have government, and that we have good government. So citizens, it's your right, it's your obligation to participate in your government. If you don't participate, do you really have the right to complain? So I am urging every registered voter in the City of Starkville to get out on April 1st and vote. Exercise your right. Participate in this election so Starkville and the Board and the Mayor, whoever the victor be, continue to operate and move the city forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Drappel. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close for citizen comments, and we will move to public hearings. We have two. Mr. Havlin?
You do honors, thank you. Yes, the first one we have is PUD 25-01. This is a request by Crabtree Properties, LLC to, it is a rezoning, but it's a re-establishment of a planned unit development, zoning classification, commonly called a PUD. The zoning classification currently is TN-E, traditional neighborhood existing, and that designation is on 508 and 502 McKee Avenue, and also at 407 Skates. Go back to this, here's an arrow of the property in question, in the red, you can see that it's all at the same zone there. So a little back history on this, on January 21st, 2005, the Board of Aldermen approved the request to rezone several of these lots, which are indicated in pink on the left, from R2 to a PUD, and that was based on the master plan, which is shown on the right, so that was kind of like the regulating document going forward from there. The plan was never fully implemented, the master plan shows approximately 25 detached dwelling units, currently on the site, there are only 14 units. At the time of the rezoning, the entire, the time of the establishment of PUD, the entire area rezoned, or was zoned, R2 Single Family, sorry. So that is the area up here, this is that zoning map from 2000. The official zoning map was updated again in 2013, which is the map at the bottom left, and at that time, the designation was incorrectly applied, so the designation was applied actually on Josie Park, which is right here, and not on the approved PUD. So then, fast forward to 2019, when we're doing the UDC, that information was not available to us at the time, we did notice the error of Josie Park being a PUD, so that was correctly converted to a designation reserved for city property, and then the rest of it was put into a traditional neighborhood existing classification. So the current request is to take some of the property back to the PUD zone. So you can see the image on the left is what the request is to do, the properties that are along Scale Street would stay in the traditional neighborhood existing neighborhood, there's a plat that y'all will be reviewing later on, and part of that plat, they're adding a lot in between these two houses to add another detached dwelling there, and so the properties at the 502 and 508 McKee Avenue, plus the southern portion of this lot, would go into the PUD. And then the image on the left is going to be the regulatory master plan for that, so the only additional building being proposed, be added, is right here in the corner, and that is where they recently demolished the building, that was actually sitting in the right-of-way and on top of a ditch, so you just want to add another structure, just real similar to the ones that are around it.
Would this be considered a Scrivener's error, basically?
Yes, it would definitely be a Scrivener's error, it's all kind of viewed the same. So for a zoning to occur, it can either be found that there's an error in the map with a need to correct the error or change condition. Stat is recommended in planning zoning decree that there is obviously an error in the map, and by not correcting the error, you sort of deprived him of the right to do what he was already approved. And so we notified the request as a rezoning, and of course, UDC, 30 property owners, a record 160 feet. LEAB is published on February 20th, 2025, assigned posted on the property, and as of this date, we've received no comments or input from that notification. We added one condition to the plat, and the condition is just basically defining this gray area, based on the plat that y'all will be reviewing later, as the area that's going to be rezoned. And the planning zoning commission at the Marshall Leto Bee voted unanimously directed approval with that condition.
Okay, all right, any questions of Mr. Havlin? None? Okay. Is the applicant here? Do you have anything you'd like to answer?
No comments.
No, okay, thank you. All right, with that, then I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this, now would be your opportunity, either for or against, either for or against. All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and we need to have a motion, have a motion for approval from Alderman Sistrunk, do I have a second? Second from Alderman Vaughn, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And if I may, since we've got Mr. Havlin up here anyway, this next, this item that we did not put on consent is also a final plat approval from McKee Conages, it's related.
That's the end of from that.
Okay, all right, and it doesn't require a public hearing at all, but I thought as long as we've got you here, without objection from the Board, we go ahead and take this one up. Is there anything you'd like to add about this plat?
It's just made of cleaning it up, you can see here how lots are done, some of the lots are crossing over to the PUD, that's got a single house on it, so it's just cleaning everything up.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Havlin from that aspect? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
To move.
A motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second? Second from Alderman Vaughn, all those in, I'm sorry, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, now we'll move on to our next public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen.
For a point of privilege, just to let you know that Officer Perez has decided that she wants to go be a deputy, so this will be probably the last time we will see her, but she has been an asset to us as a code enforcement officer, so we appreciate what you've done, and give you a fond bon voyage, but we'll see you in a different color uniform. All right, proceed.
I'm here today to present a 211911 case for 117 Curtis Street, its parcel number This property is owned by Charles Phillips. On February 11th, the first inspection done of the property, you can see the photos show exterior deterioration, as well as junk on the property, and a notice of violation letter was sent to the property owner and returned as not forwardable. The photo, the second inspection was done on March 4th, these photos show that no change has been done to the property. The public hearing notice was posted on the property and at City Hall on March 4th, and a second notice was sent to the property owner along with that public hearing notice on March 4th. An administrative inspection warrant was signed by Judge Brian Kelly on March 6th and executed on March 7th by myself, Officer Gabriel Steamwhite, and building officials Steam McMillan. These photos show exterior as well as interior. The interior of the structure, as you can see, pieces of ceiling have fallen in, pieces of the wall are missing. That next to the commode is a hole in the floor. This room, as you can see, there has been new drywall put up, however, these photos show with the lights off, I was using a flashlight in the previous photos, light coming through, that is an exterior wall. that is an exterior wall. The notice, the second notice that I had sent was sent certified mail, but returned also undeliverable.
For clarification, this is not Curtis Circle, it's Curtis Street?
It is Curtis Circle, but it's in the maps, it's, or on the tax records, it's Curtis Street.
Okay.
So.
Well, the tax records would be our guiding document, okay? All right, any questions of Officer Perez? Any questions? Okay. Sir?
I think, I think, uh, it's a child, I think he's deceased. I know it well, I think he's deceased.
Okay, so.
Just recently, though, right? It hasn't been that long, though, has it?
Three years.
Well, clearly, clearly, there's no one, I mean, I want to make this assumption, there's no one living there, I will confirm that there's no one living there. I assume not, but you never know what you, when you assume. All right.
I don't know about his kid.
Well, someone's obviously not taking care of it, so.
A few come to us.
All right, I'll open it as a public hearing, just give me just a moment. Anyone wishing to speak to this particular location, 117 Curtis Street, with parcel number 102C-00-161.00, as a 2119, such state of uncleanliness is to be a menace to the public, health, safety, and welfare of the community, such that demolition, demolition could occur. Anyone wishing to speak to this, either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and with that, entertain a motion?
I'm just making one comment. The taxes have not been paid in the last two years. It's actually four years behind, so we need to, before we do this, make sure that somebody didn't buy them taxes.
Well, even if they did, we are still able to proceed, so.
No, I was just saying, so it'd be on the record that the taxes have not been paid, so we don't get into the same thing we did on the North Side of town.
Okay, all right, so with that, would you like to make a motion? All right, Alderman Rupp, do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. And that takes us to the claim stock.
Need to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sistrunk. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, thank you so much.
Mayor, before, may I be recognized, Mr. Perez, would you come up here for a moment, please? Thanks for allowing me to get recognized for being a great mayor. Mr. Perez, I would have been remiss in my duties and responsibilities, just want to add on to what the mayor has said. You've done a very remarkable job for our city, and you've always presented yourself so very professional with the highest level of professionalism, and the Vice Mayor really hates that this is obviously an apparent, your last meeting. We, including myself, would certainly like to see you remain with us, but I, I respect your decision, but you have such a very wealth of knowledge in your area of expertise, and you have done an immaculate job in fulfilling your assigned duties, and including others that you may be tasked with. Just wanted to say that to you before you exited this City Hall. Want you to always know that the Vice Mayor, of course, you know how long I've been around, but I'm not just wasting time, but I've seen the code compliance officers come and go, and, but it is with esteemed pleasure that I say to you that you leave a great legacy with your fulfillment of your duties, and it's going to be hard to fill this position with someone of your caliber, in my opinion, but I must yield to your decision and say I wish you the best in all of your endeavors, I pray that God will continue to bless you, and if you ever decide to return, you certainly, hopefully, will contact our Honorable Mayor and our Police Chief. But until then, until next time, thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I was looking at the audience, and I was remiss, I need to acknowledge the firefighters who went up. Chief, would you come up here just for a second, because I need, yes, just because I don't remember the names of where, of who they were, or where they went, but I wanted to be able to acknowledge them, so would you mind giving us a little bit of that on when they went up on Sunday?
Yes, ma'am. The task force was activated Saturday evening around 6:30. They returned Sunday morning around 7:30, somewhere thereabout. It was Train Chief Brian Arnett, Captain Justin Edwards, and Sergeant Chase Fair.
Okay.
They went down on a mission to search the, do a secondary search of the tornado damage area, maybe search destruction.
Okay, would you please give them our, our appreciation for their doing that, and I should have mentioned that in my comments, so I apologize for doing that.
That's not a problem, we'll, we'll do that.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, last but not least, guys, calling a work session in accordance with the notice required under Mississippi Code annotated 254113. The Board will have a work session on Friday, the 28th of March, 2025, at 11:00 AM. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second floor conference room located at 110 West Main. Notice should be provided to the work session within one hour of this meeting. By posting such notice at City Hall, the notice for the work session will be made a part of the minutes of the Board meeting. The work session will be an open public meeting of the city of Starkville, and public and press are invited to attend. And could I get a motion for us to adjourn?
Approve.
Alderman Vaughn, all right, thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
The second from Alderman Rupp. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.